Good morning, everybody, and welcome to the Thursday, July 30th meeting of the Board of Commissioners. It's now time to call the meeting to order at 10:02. We will offer the opportunity now for any items not on our agenda for public comment. Would there be any public comment at this time? If so, please feel free to unmute yourself and offer your public comment. Seeing no one here for public comment, we will offer the opportunity for public comment when items are on under discussion. Please feel free to again unmute yourself when it's under discussion and we'll give you the opportunity for public comment. Moving into the meeting minutes from Thursday, July 23rd, would there be a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes from July 23rd.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any final discussion on those minutes? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried. We do have one proclamation on here. This is proclamation 17 of this year proclaiming the month of August as gastroparesis awareness month. We had a constituent reach out to us who had done this previously. We had done it previously last year, and they were interested in us doing it again, raising awareness to this, to this condition. So we'd look for a motion to adopt proclamation.
Sure, I'd be happy to do so. My friend Mickey and a number of her friends that I'm also friends with do have this long-term, sometimes debilitating, sometimes fatal condition. There are a broad variety of other digestive disorders as well that can really destroy a person's quality of life. So I would like to proclaim the month of August as gastroparesis awareness month and adopt proclamation number 17 of 2020.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any final discussion or comments on this? Hearing none. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried. Okay. At the chair's discretion, we're going to move up item. Let's see where this is at. It's under non-personnel items, the Commissioners item, consolidated claim authorization bankruptcy estate. And so we're going to turn it over to Margaret for some introduction to this one.
Okay, thanks very much. The county was notified of an opportunity to submit a claim in the Purdue Pharma case, which involves the opioid situation. And Betsy's going to walk us through what that means so that the Commissioners can make a determination about whether or not they would like to be a part of this lawsuit. I'll turn it over to Betsy.
Yeah, so as everyone's aware from the media, there has been, am I okay? I thought maybe I had an echo. I'm sorry. There has been a bankruptcy filing by Purdue Pharma, and a lot of that was generated by the massive flow of opioid litigation across the country. We've already talked about the cases that we are either a part of because of that or have been working with the Attorney General on. This is, as a result of all that, Purdue Pharma filed a bankruptcy. This is now a sort of settlement in the bankruptcy which allows municipal entities, including Center County, to file a proof of claim. The, the, the proof of claim can be filed in one of three ways. One is to use the accepted calculated formula, which is provided through the bankruptcy and approved by the bankruptcy court. The second option is to make your own claim based upon your own actual expenses as you determine them. And then there's a third option, which is kind of a hybrid of the two. I, I think at this point it's, it's best to use option one because we have not exactly come up with a way to assess our damages directly. I think we've talked about it. We've got some ideas. I know Tom's on the line and he can certainly say he's not tracking it. But this is the fair way that the court has decided to make sure that every governmental entity gets a fair shake in the bankruptcy. I, I believe the, the proof of claim that you have before you is, is in the hundreds of millions of dollars. But we all know that this is likely to be a cents-on-the-dollar payment. It's a matter of getting a placeholder and getting your county, Center County, into the mix for consideration. Any questions?
Thank you very much. Yeah, please. Any questions for Betsy? Okay. Hearing none. Would there be a motion? Let me get back to the agenda here. Would there be a motion to approve the consolidated claim form?
No, excuse me. Motion to approve the consolidated claim form.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any final discussion on that? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
I will add that that needs to be submitted today since today is the official deadline. So Betsy will take your decision and submit the filing electronically so that we are within the filing timeframe.
Okay, we'll, we'll make sure to take care of. You know, I believe it's just my signature that we need to see. So I can take care of that and make sure that you receive that.
That's great. Thank you.
Sure. Okay, thank you, Betsy, very much. We're going to return to, to the top of the agenda, returning to the COVID-19 planning and response personnel items. We have one item at the correctional facility, and this would be to consider the approval of the reinstatement of Lorinda Brown, reentry specialist from reduced arrows furlough to full-time status. And this would be effective for this upcoming Monday. Would there be a motion to approve those personnel requests?
Motion to approve the personnel request from the correctional facility.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any final discussion on that? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried. I do want to note, and this might have been, there may have been a reason it was pulled, but in our agenda packet, we do have, we do have a memo for both Lorinda Brown and Kay Woodring Shearer. Are we going to wait on Kay's?
Yes, they've, they've pulled Kay back for now. They requested to have that removed from the agenda.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that was the case. Okay. Our next item is going to be personnel travel policy for employees, and we'll turn it over to Margaret for this as well.
Thanks very much. The Board of Commissioners previously discussed the issue around personal travel for employees. As you recall, and as is happening subsequently, we are receiving many questions from our employees about personal travel and what the expectations are from the county as its employer, as their employer. Kristin prepared the attached personnel travel policy. It is obviously in draft form. We've shared it with the President Judge who supports this policy because the court is also being asked questions about the guidance that we should be providing consistently to all of our employees. I'll let Kristin go through the provisions of the policy that I see Natalie has put up on the screen.
Hi, thank you, everybody. What I did was took the information, the guidelines that Margaret had put together with some of the wording on what travel is and going to high-risk areas. We put a link into the current states designated by the state as those as high-risk. And we've given employees an option if they do choose on their own to travel there. If they're able to work from home when they return, they will be on quarantine for 14 days and will be able to work remotely. If they have unused paid sick time vacation or personal, they will be allowed to use that if they're not able to work from home, or the employee may take the time as unpaid. We'd be requiring them to be quarantined for the time period as recommended by the state. There are, I checked with a lot of other counties. There are a lot of other counties doing this same exact thing right now. Some are not even giving them the option of using sick and vacation. So I think doing that does give them, you know, the option of still getting paid. And then maybe they will decide to travel because they know they can still do that when they get back. We've included that they need to notify about any travel. We did put in there that if exceptions need to be made, they should be sent to Human Resources or to the President Judge so that the Commissioners can make an exception to that. That's the overall gist of it. If anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Good. Thank you very much, Kristin. I think the one thing that I did, I, I didn't see in here, maybe we can talk a little bit about it, was if an individual would go on vacation somewhere, and while they're there, let's say for a one-week stay, that state is designated as a trap or a travel advisory by the Department of Health. What would happen in that situation where an employee wasn't planning on having to do a 14-day quarantine? Whoever, you know, so, so my suggestion would be it's when they, if they leave and a state is not on the list, and while they're there, it's turned into a list, we would not require them to do a 14-day quarantine. That would be my, that would be my suggestion. However, we could always make it where if it is. If it turns into a 14-day quarantine, that definitely would have to, you know, would have to, again, quarantine for 14 days. So I just wanted to make sure we had that. Or we could always, what we could do is we could, if that occurs, it could be up to our discretion and we could take that on a wage by case basis. That's another way to do it as well.
That was my thought on that sort of situation. That would be sort of the exception type of situation where they're like, well, I didn't know it was a quarantine state when I came back. While I was there, it happened when I came back. Now I don't have the time to cover it. And if they can't work remotely, maybe we allow them to use the COVID authorized leave time. But that would be an exception that would be made at that time weighing in the factor that they did not know in advance that it was a quarantine state.
Okay, so we take it on a case-by-case basis. Okay.
That would be my suggestion.
Okay.
Yeah, I had a similar question, but you pretty much answered it. I think it is important that we do have the exception to the policy that can be run by the Board of Commissioners or the President Judge because, you know, there are funerals, there are health emergencies by close relatives so that we can consider those depending on the circumstances.
Exactly. It's more for that personal. I just want to go on vacation travel.
Okay, all right. And we do want, we do want to note, again, that this has been reviewed by the courts and the President Judge. And this would be a, as many of our other policies as related to COVID-19 have been implemented and approved. This is also with their support and they have reviewed it. So I think that's important to note. Okay. Any other questions or comments before we look for a motion? Okay. Hearing none. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the personal travel policy.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried. Okay. All right. Thank you very much, Kristin. Well, let's do this. Let's, uh, let's, we'll come back to the county relief block grant conversation, and we can take care of some of the other items. And again, loop back. It should only take a minute or two. So we're going to then go into personnel items, item six. This would be for aging. We would look for a motion to consider the approval of the personnel requisition for full-time RSVP assistant in the aging office.
A motion to approve the personnel requisition for a full-time RSVP assistant in aging.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried. We do want to report that the Parthonitary, Jeremy Breon, has approved the personnel requisition for full-time first deputy parthonitary. And that was effective earlier this week. We have some non-personnel items, just one actually. And we do want to note that the satisfaction piece is for Gregory and Amber, A-M-B-E-R, not Amber, but Amber Patrick, for the premises located at 270 South Science Park Court State College. We do have Betsy Bart on the, on the, on the conference with us. Betsy, anything you wanted to add about, about this?
This is just the first time the fire was from 2004. Being originated now.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Okay. Thank you very much. Any questions or comments for Betsy before we look for a motion? Hearing none. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the satisfaction piece for Gregory and Amber Patrick.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried. Okay. Thank you, Betsy. Returning to the county relief block grant, we have been focusing on this quite a bit. We know that Mary Kay. We may have somebody that is not on mute. But, but we've been working diligently on this, and we want to have a specific conversation today on the progress we're making. So we can turn it over to Margaret for a little bit of an introduction on this, and then also Mary Kay. So Margaret will turn it over to you.
Okay, thanks very much. We'd like to talk about an update today on the county relief block grant in two parts. The first part would involve a review of our progress on those items which we believe would fall under our county government expenditures. And we've been, as I said, making good progress in zeroing in on a lot of those projects and numbers. We have another draft for you to look at today. It is not the final draft, but I thought it was important for you to see the different items that are contained on the report and, you know, provide some feedback to us so that we know we're on the right track. Krista has been compiling these projects and the numbers, and we have the latest draft put up. And after she goes through that, then we'll turn it over to Mary Kay, who's been working night and day on the small business grants and has some updates for you all this morning.
Good morning.
I'll turn it over to Krista.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for, um, the, thank you for being able to listen to the proposal that we're still working through. We are definitely close to being finished, but I just wanted to show you our, our progress. We are again with what has been spent, 710, and what we would plan on spending through the remainder of the year. Some changes that you may notice is that we are going, we are in talks with McClure and company to see if we, we can have our system retrofit to put UV ionization techniques into our air filtration. But because that information is not available, I wanted to put a placeholder there and let you know that that is something that we are very interested in, but we just don't have a number. But I would think within the next week, we could get to that number. We still did put the MRF filters, which is the first stage of improving our air filtration. So that is still on there for, for four quarters of buying improved filters. As we go down to physical modifications, we did add touchless sink faucets for our bathrooms and also soap dispensers and paper valve dispensers. So again, just trying to mitigate germs in the bathroom facilities. So we've put some numbers there for your review. And also, thanks to our connection with ZA and their specialties and, and help, we were able to understand that we could claim wages and benefits of first responders for, to respond to COVID and to work throughout our COVID scenarios. So we did, thanks to Tom, we've put in wages that have been spent through date through this, through 710, and also in the future. You can see that on line five under administration. So that is a new addition as well. Last thing is teleworking. We did add the request for future broadband internet width. Excuse me, not broadband, but internet bandwidth. So we are asking for that as well. So you see that there's a slight difference in increase since our last draft. We're at 2.1 million. So I would invite any and all feedback as to where you think we are and what, what you'd like to see.
Thank you, Krista. Any feedback on these?
On my laptop screen, the type's kind of small, so I'm needing a minute to read through everything.
I'm good.
From my standpoint, Krista, I do like the inclusion of the touchless amenities in the bathrooms, I guess. You could say, just because it's, it's a, if we encourage employees and visitors to wash their hands, that's a, that's a great way. Great thing to do. One of the things, I know, I know Tom's on the phone with us or on the line with us. As we go forward, so I guess the way of thinking about this is some of these expenditures are, were budgeted in our, in our budget for 2020. And some of these aren't. They're specifically, specifically related to the COVID-19 pandemic, and they're new costs, you could say. It would be helpful at some point to appreciate the fact that we would be seeing a savings in our 2020 budget predominantly in that row 24 and 26. I'm sorry, 24 and row 27. Upwards of $1.6 million that we would be using general fund dollars for, and instead we're using the CARES Act money for. So that would, I would assume Tom have a assist on our budget, correct?
Yeah, you're exactly correct. Again, those, those were expenses and/or, you know, salaries and benefits that we've already had budgeted for 2020. They would have typically been covered by general fund revenue or to cover those costs. And again, we don't have to use that now. So again, this would be a complete offset to offset our budget by those amounts since they're allowable expenses.
Yeah, so my, my, my thing would be whenever it's, it's appropriate to maybe put some, put something together to allow us to appreciate then where we're at for, throughout, throughout the year, whatever feasible. But the one, the one thing that I had suggested via email was in terms of, are we capturing any of the prime care work that's being done at the correctional facility? Or could we? They've been doing a lot of testing there at the correctional facility. And their nurses as well have been doing a lot of COVID-19-related work. And I know public, the way it's framed in the, in the Treasury guidance is public health employees. They're a contracted health employee, but I don't know if there's any wiggle room there. But I wanted to see if we could maybe ask ZA about that, get some guidance there on that.
We can do that. I know, I think Glenn is on the phone this morning. I believe the testing is not a cost to the facility, but you are correct. We have employees and nurses and others who are COVID-19 focused. And it may be that there is possibility for some reimbursement through our prime care contract or to our prime care contract. We, we will follow up on that.
Okay, thank you.
Now, I, I noticed that we don't have the PPE on here. That came from a different part of the spreadsheet, correct?
That is correct. That's being covered under Jeff's PPE.
All right.
Orders, except that I would say, Commissioner Higgins, that you'll notice at the top, there is a line item for masks that have already been expended, and that is PPE. And, and that, you know, masks are, fall under that category. The county purchased those masks separately from anything that Jeff was working on then or is working on prospectively.
Okay. Yeah, I noticed a lot of the numbers have changed, and as somebody mentioned, we're probably up by a couple hundred thousand. So we may end up needing to adjust a few other totals for some of the other buckets based on these changes. But it, it looks like good work and great that we have ZA on a consulting basis to say, hey, in our opinion, this, this is legitimate. These people are working on COVID-related items, and therefore you can ask for payment from the state. That's, that's great.
I do think it's noteworthy that in the first column, that first total at the bottom are all items that have been expended. So that would all be reimbursement to us, or already expended items, salaries and otherwise.
In regards to the UV filtration, if it's possible, I've, I've read some things where it says that that works, read some things where it doesn't work, or it has to be, the, the way it works would have to be in a specific type of environment. So if we could just double check, I, would we rely on, it'll be a hefty amount of money. I just want to make sure that it's something that actually would work. I know there's a lot of debate on whether or not UV works and how it works. So.
Yes, yes, Commissioner Piper, I wanted to clarify. I, on the, the UV sanitation, they take those wands. They were on one of the first cuts of the proposal, eating your advice about that. And I misspoke about the, the air filtration. It's a bipolar ionization that could be put within our duct work for clear air filtration. So I'm needing to vet out that possibility with McClure, and would get back to you to report on that as soon as I have some answers on that.
The filter, I mean, the filters, I think are, those have been shown that they do have an effect, absolutely. But in terms of the UV light, yeah, I just would be curious on how they work and, so thank you. Okay.
We did also, we did also receive some clarification from ZA about how far in advance we can order supplies along the lines of things like filters. And they've said to us that we, we need to not order for, you know, years in advance. We have to order what is reasonable and what we can use in this period of time. So that's why we've adjusted some of the numbers accordingly because of their guidance to us.
Okay. Good clarity to have. Absolutely. Okay. Any other thoughts, feedback on this? We're obviously going to be talking about it more and more and refining it as we go forward. But it looks like we have consensus to keep, to keep these numbers on here and go forward. So much appreciation. Any final comments on this? Feedback? Okay. All right. Thank you very much, Chris.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Okay, so we'd be then entering into the business grants portion of this conversation. And I think if we are, we would turn it over to Mary Kay.
Awesome. Good morning, everybody, and I thank you for the opportunity to present some information to everybody. Natalie is loading up what is a, a draft, and you will see that up the upper left-hand corner. This is not ready to go to press, to print. We still have some work on it. But I just want to thank the entire team, the Commissioners Office, and Margaret and Krista, everybody's in the Controller's Office. We've all really been rowing the boat in the same direction, and I greatly appreciate that. It's made my job a lot easier. So we have been working in partnership and will be working in partnership. Commissioner Higgins has a good working relationship with the Small Business Development Center, the SBDC. And the SBDC and the Central County Government will be working in concert to get this particular application out. So a question might be, when is this going to get out? We are hopeful that it will be out sometime next week. And that depends on several things, but that's what we are targeting for. And we're, I'm putting together some timelines today to try to better understand. And I'll be working with SBDC on that. So when you take a look at this application, So when you take a look at this application, one thing that you will note is that it's, we have been working with Zelenkovsky and Axelrod, everybody is calling them ZA. They are located in Harrisburg. And ZA has been working now and under contract with 30 different counties across Pennsylvania to help them with this monumental task of getting all this out quickly, in the money in the hands of people, and also correctly. So they've been really helpful. I had an application that we worked on last week for the business grant. And we, when we talked with ZA, we realized, hey, they've been doing this, and this application that you see in front of you has been issued in other counties. So we really felt good that ZA is basically an accounting firm, as well as they have a partnership with Campbell and Durant. And so they, they're a legal team. So what we really wanted to make sure is that we had firm foundation for what we're doing and making sure that we are dotting our i's and crossing our t's. So let's just take a quick look at this. I know this is small print. But this, we had talked about that we were going to have a first round just for restaurants and businesses. Excuse me, restaurants and bars, pardon me, just for restaurants and bars. And then through some feedback and some information and discussion from constituents and among our own team, what we are considering right now that the first round will go out to all businesses. It won't just be restaurants and bars. Now, restaurants and bars will certainly be part of this grant application process. So it's not like we're excluding anybody, but it's just we're including more. Why we chose to do that is that we found that there were some, you know, areas of, you know, gosh, is this a restaurant or bar, is say a concession wagon, or a VFW, or things like that. So rather than muddy the water, we thought to clear the water by just presenting this to all businesses to have an opportunity to move forward. So I will say that on this document, there is some reference to nonprofit. And that will be a different application process. So how we're looking at doing this is this first round will go out, again, just to businesses. And the businesses will be, when we take a look at the CARES Act and some of this information, what we are going to be supporting businesses that have fewer than 100 employees. And one of the large questions that I know businesses will want to know about, if I have received PPP or the emergency disaster, the EDIL, can I still apply for this? And the answer is yes, you can. You are not eliminated from the process. We are going to be doing some priority ratings on this. And so individuals who have not received anything PPP or EDIL, they will have a greater priority than someone who has. But those individuals who have received funds from those, again, you can still apply. I, as you take a look, thank you Natalie for going down this application. This application will be online, and I will be working with our IT department, with Chad. I know he's very, very helpful with these matters. So we'll be putting this online, we'll also be, again, working with SBDC because they will be collecting the data. So as you see through there, it's, it's pretty boilerplate, pretty simple information that we're going to be asking. And then as we go through, there's a lot of questions. Again, the type of organization that individuals are. Again, it will be for, just for profit, not the, I have some data here to remove as far as nonprofit entity, that will be in another round. If you could turn to the final page of the document, excuse me, the fourth page, not the final page. We are going to be, like, because this is the money, the federal money, we do have to get some documentation from businesses. And so we will be asking for, you know, typical information that have been requested on many other of like PPP or EDIL loans. We need to make sure that we do our due diligence to make sure that, our, our main goal is to, again, to get the money out to central county businesses that are struggling. But we also want to make sure we're fair and equitable. So in order to do that, we are going to be asking for some informations as far as profit and loss, as far as some tax documentation. And one thing that is something that I just wanted to mention, so everybody understands this, with this process, there isn't, there are opportunities for entities to ask for right-to-know requests. So when this information is submitted, that is part of it. It's not saying that it's going to happen, but that is part of the application. And Natalie, if you wouldn't just turn to the final page, we have that noted in there. So we will be asking individuals to use this application. We're also going to have another document that will be a certification statement document. Basically, you know, certifying, one of the things that is our main priority, of course, is that they are businesses that are 100 or less. And also individuals, excuse me, businesses that are headquartered here in Central County. And also higher as Central County residents. So those are going to be some of the weightings, some of the priorities that we will be putting into this application. I, I will just pause for a moment to see if there are any questions at this point, or any discussion.
Thank you, Mary Kay. I I think the recommendation about going to, taking it from restaurants and bars and making it all businesses makes complete sense. I've been having that, I've been having a call almost every other day since we first launched this, or discussed this, from entities in other industries that have been equally, equally or more affected by the targeted mitigation efforts. And so I think it, I think it does make sense. I think it will reduce a lot of work that you'll have to do and we'll have to do in terms of clarifying the process. So I think it, I think it makes a lot of sense. So I, I, I would support the recommendation. I do think it does streamline it. And then from the ZA application standpoint, I think it does a really good job of capturing things from the CARES Act, what we need to satisfy from the CARES Act perspective and the audit perspective. I think it does a really good job of that. So I, I, I appreciate them sending that over and us being able to see what they have done in other counties. So again, I, I think the recommendation is really, really important for us to consider and appreciate. And I think, I think everybody's going to support it. Businesses, restaurant, bars can still apply. But everybody else can as well. I think it, I think it will be, I think it will be well received.
I just paused to make sure, does anybody else have any questions? Does anybody have any discussions, comments, anything? Because we're working feverishly on this here, so thank you.
I've, I've got quite a lot of questions and discussion, but maybe Steve would want to go next before I spend quite a bit of time on it.
Well, my first, my first concern, and it has been since the beginning, I think there's got to be a better way of certifying somebody's ability to document a loss in their business, other than providing tax information. I, I can't support that, and I will not support that. But primarily, and I will tell you, the fact that it's open for public dissertation really upsets me. So we need, in my humble opinion, we need to find a better system to, to do this. Whether it's, I just don't think keeping that information, having it available for public scrutiny makes any sense. I don't have any problem if we have questions, if we, if we need to document it in some other way that includes not having our people or anybody have copies of that tax information. But the fact that it's available for public scrutiny, it's unsettling to me, and I can't support it.
And Commissioner Dershowitz, I appreciate that. I think we're in nobody, we, we don't want to be in this position. The challenge is, from a legal standpoint, it's very difficult for us not to ask that information because we need to verify that the businesses that are receiving or asking for money have had documented losses that have occurred. And in addition, that, that, those documented losses have not already been recouped by other federal programs. And so unfortunately, the only way to do that is to ask for the type of information from a profit and loss standpoint. And then verifying the 2019 numbers are correct by the, the tax documents. The options would be, we abandon the business program, we don't do it, which I don't think any of us want to do. I, I mean, I mean, truly, I, I I think sometimes we need to make, you know, we, we need to look at the options that are in front of us. And unfortunately, that's where it's at. You know, ZA confirmed that with us yesterday, so.
So I, I'm still in favor of we have to retain that data, and they can't, we can't just certify that there is a loss. If the retention of the data has, has my major concern here.
Well, yeah, because we need to retain it for the audit. If there's going to be, when there's an audit of this, and, and if whoever does it is looking, wants to look at what businesses got the money and how they got the money, we're going to have to produce that so that they can verify that these, you know, businesses got the money in specific ways.
We can't just have a certification that, that we, that we have looked at it and it is correct. We have to maintain and retain records of that.
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's, that's according to ZA. That's what we heard yesterday.
I would like further clarification on what we need actually to do to, to retain records. Because I, I am, I am unsettled by the fact that this is not exempted from the the right-to-know actions that citizens may have. That same information is not available through any other source that a business would give their, give that information to, including the federal government.
Well, the, yeah, I mean, I don't know if there's any FOIA's going on currently for what businesses send in for the PPP program. I'm not aware of that. But again, ZA is, that's what ZA is telling us. I think they've sent an email or two out, or Mary Kay has forwarded that to all of us for our, our review. We can always ask them again for further clarification on that. So why don't we do that? We'll ask them for further clarification on the right-to-know from.
I was just hoping we might be able to find another, another way to comply with the, with the auditing requirements without retaining what I consider very, very confidential data. And I think ultimately, I think it will inhibit a lot of, a lot of businesses from participating in this, simply on that basis.
I was just gonna say, Mary Kay, why don't we get clarification from ZA, walk through it with them? I mean, Commissioner, we could, so whenever we get a right-to-know request, as we all know, we don't have to turn it over. We could take the position that we are not going to return this, turn this information over. And instead, because we believe it's proprietary and have the OOR weighing in on it. And then in addition, the OOR says you need to turn it over, we can always take it to higher-level courts. That's always an option that's presented to us. So that's, that's, again, that's an option that we could look at down the road. But again, Mary Kay, please.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I'd be really happy. I'll draft, you know, a question, what I think I'm hearing from Commissioner Dershowitz. And I'll send that over to Margaret, and then she can vet that, you know, to make sure I'm asking the question correctly to ZA. I, I do know Commissioner Dershowitz, when we had our call with ZA two days ago, they, we did, we were trying to find, you know, a creative way or a different way of finding, you know, certifications. And somebody on our team asked, you know, is there any way we could get an accounting firm? Like, you know, if a small business had an accounting firm, could they certify that there was losses due to COVID? And, you know, the answer that I remember hearing was that yes, you could, but that most accountants out there are not going to do that, because that puts onus onto them. I know I can't speak for every accounting firm, and I'm not in that world, but that was one way we were looking at, is there a different way? So I, I'm not saying we've, you know, exercised everything. I can say that this application and this process has been used in, you know, many other counties. I'm not saying that that's the end-all be-all, but that, that's where we're coming from, from the advice of ZA.
I would appreciate one more look at this, if you can find out today if there's anything else we can do. I think we really, I think we need to do our due diligence on this and maybe get a second opinion. Because I, I really, I struggle with the fact that, that, you know, we're looking down, you know, hundreds and hundreds of, of applications. And to have that information just be wholesale available, I, I really struggle with it. But I think if there's another way for, for us to, to find that information, and I I just don't, I mean, I understand what accountants do, but I also, I, I understand that accountants are very careful. I just want to make sure that, that we are exercising every option before we ask what I think is a very intrusive discussion about people's finances.
Thank you.
Well, there's been a pause, so sorry if I don't hit this point.
Please.
All right, I see some nods. So I can, I can see both sides about restaurants and bars versus all businesses. But Mary Kay, I'm gonna caution you. I've kind of been in the IT field for a while. There's going to be a huge difference between having a couple hundred bars and restaurants trying to fill out this application in the first couple days versus having well over 1,000 businesses trying to fill out this application simultaneously. You need to check with, with Chad, with RBA, and PUS, and also the Small Business Development Center to say, hey, is the system we're putting up robust enough to handle 100 or more live sessions simultaneously? For like eight or nine hours a day for a couple weeks? Because I suspect, you know, business people are, are busy, they're going to start to fill out the form, they're going to get distracted. They're going to take a phone call from a, from a customer, from a supplier. And the session's going to be up for, I don't know, an hour or two, three hours maybe. So please check with the IT side that whatever platform we put this on will be able to handle that level of service. Because, you know, I don't want the headline in the newspapers a day or two later to be county small business grant application system crashes. I think it was just bars and restaurants, it probably wouldn't crash. So please, please look into that. So going through the application, top to bottom, toward the bottom of page one, there's some text in red where ZA is suggesting that we ask for a certain percentage of revenue that can be attributed to a certain percentage loss in revenue that can be attributed to COVID-19. I, I think, I think that's just fine. I've mentioned it before, I, I really don't think the revenue, annual revenue has any bearing on this because you're going to have manufacturing firms, high-tech firms, companies that do distribution that could have very high revenue for a 50-employee company. But I don't think that's any reason to reduce or eliminate their grant. It's just the business they're in, they happen to have fairly high revenue per employee. I like the headquarters in Central County, operates in Central County. But I, I think we might need a little more information to try to score these better. As I said on Tuesday, I think there's a big difference between like a franchise of a national chain that's locally owned. Where when the truck backs up to the dock, there's nothing on that truck that came from Center County. Versus a farm to table type operation or some sort of food processing operation or even some other local business where a lot of their raw materials or a lot of their customers are in Center County. So I don't know if we're going to do that as a follow-up, if we're going to rely on the SBDC to kind of add a little texture in there. But in my opinion, from a grant side, not all businesses are created exactly equal. Moving on to the second page.
Can I please ask Mark, Commissioner Higgins, the, is there a different way? Or maybe perhaps rather than getting into it here, if there's a different way for us to ask the questions in the red, that would make more sense, that would be more to your point. I, I don't know, I need to take your, everybody's time now, but perhaps we can have greater discussion of how to get at that.
Sure. Yeah, I'd be happy to chat with you about that even later today.
Thank you very much.
I've got some openings. On the second page, I keep adding this back in. When you're asking a small business for an NAICS number, you have to explain what that is and you need to include the link to the website for them to find it.
Yeah, that's great. And I did have that down. I've, I've been doing some edits, but I really appreciate you pointing that out.
Yeah, because they're busy, especially our smaller businesses aren't thinking about that number.
Thank you.
Phone, cell phone. In the middle of the third page, I think we need to finesse that a little bit. You know, does your organization have fewer than 100 total employees? Yes or no? I know in another part of the form, we ask if they're in logic. But I, I don't know why this question keeps coming up. Does your organization have 500 or fewer total employees? Because I'm not seeing that anywhere in the legislation.
Yeah, again, this is, this was the template from ZA, so I could, is your question that it's just too repetitive? Or is that what's the purpose of it?
Well, just from a ease of filling out logical consistency standpoint, obviously, the first question is, do you have fewer than 100 total employees? Yes, then you may be eligible for this program. I think the next question is, and it's mentioned later in the form, is is your organization involved in, it's the top of the next page. Is your organization primarily engaged in the tourism industry and then a short explanation of why? But I think we only need to know that if they have more than 100 employees. Because if you're in the tourism industry and you have less than 100 employees, you're eligible anyway. I, I just think that 500 or fewer total employees, it's a meaningless question. And I know a long time ago, several revisions back, we did have a question about roughly how many employees could this grant cause you to either retain or, or hire? That's more of a press release feel-good kind of question. Is there any reason why ZA isn't asking that question?
I, I can't answer that, but I'm, this really is, it's a, I appreciate your comments because it is a draft. So, so thank you.
And then toward the bottom of page four, they ask about the CARES Act Paycheck Protection Assistance and the IDOL grant slash loan, which is great. But I know our form actually asked for roughly how much money they receive from those programs. Because I thought we were potentially going to think about putting that into the spreadsheet and say, you know, if you received absolutely no assistance of any kind from the federal government, you know, we weren't going to put any sort of modifier in there. But that we were thinking that if a firm had received PPP or EIDL, then perhaps we would potentially look at either, you know, reducing their priority or possibly reducing the amount of their grant.
Sure. Yeah, in the previous application, we did have that. So we, again, appreciate your comments because we can certainly, you know, make changes. That's what this is about.
Now, I do like the bullet point for the top of page five. Because this is very precise. It's going to allow us to compare gross monthly revenues from March, April, May and June of 2019 versus 2020. And I would hope that by the time people are filling this out here in early August, that they have their June numbers for 2020. Do we want to have that kind of sort of on the form? Because I'm, I'm trying to think what's going to happen if either you or people at the SBDC have to hand enter those eight numbers for over 1,000 plus applications?
Yes.
I would check with Matt or whoever's helping you on the IT side over at the SBDC to see if there's a way we can capture that so it just gets sucked into a spreadsheet or at least copy and paste it into a spreadsheet as opposed to being hand entered from scratch.
Thank you. That's a great point. Thank you.
Mary Kay, this is Steve. On, on top of Mark's point, what do you do with a business that has, just say, opened in January of this year? What's the process for reviewing that?
Well, I, we haven't determined how this is all going to be vetted out. I mean, I, I think we'll have to take a look at what kind of loss. If they started in January, so they would have numbers from January through March. But we could see if there's a difference there. I, I'm sorry to tell you, I don't exactly know the answer to that, Steve. I know one thing we're requiring, I think part of that is people have to be in business beginning by March. So if they just started their business, I do believe that will be, you know, that, that's going to be tougher to analyze that.
Yeah, I don't think it's going to be very common, but, but Steve does raise a good point there. I, I'm hoping the SBDC can give us a little guidance about how we would, would look at that. Because it is going to be hard to measure revenue impact for an organization that was founded in late 2019 or early 2020.
Thank you. Great suggestions. Thank you.
Yeah, so those, those are my comments at this point. I, I did spend a little time last night immediately after you sent the, the draft, looking it over. So sorry, that was a little voluminous, but I've been thinking about this quite a bit.
No, I, I really appreciate the thoughtful process. So thank you.
So that's, that's all I have on the application.
Thank you.
So Mary Kay, I think there's going to be a melding of this one, the comments we had today, and then also the one that SBDC developed and melded it together for it's being a Center County one. When could you, when, when would you think you would anticipate having something that is, is almost close to being put out there publicly? What, when do you think that'd be reasonable?
Right. I, I think it would be reasonable. I mean, I can certainly make these edits. The, the main key is I need to work with SBDC and our IT, you know, to try to, to really try to figure out process. Because Mark does bring up a good point that, you know, making sure these things can, that the systems don't go down and that we have a, I, I keep on using the word process, you know, like crazy. But, so, I mean, I could see that if I can get in touch with everybody and we can move forward on conversations, you know, hoping by Monday, I could have something that is, you know, kind of melded together. That would be my hope.
Okay, great. Excellent. Okay. Okay, we're getting closer every day. This is helpful, again, the ZA perspective to bring them into the mix. So we're also going to get an answer back from them about options as it relates to information, the financial information the businesses are going to be receiving or submitting and how we, you know, with concerns about the right to know language. And we'll get a response back on that and that'll inform our final, final application. We do have a retirement board meeting that started a few minutes ago. We have alerted them that we'll be over there no later than 11:15. We do have some, a few more minutes for questions and feedback on this or any other comments. We've all given feedback, but are there any final feedback we want to provide or anything from you, Mary Kay?
Nothing. I, I did see that there was a chat, but when I looked at it, it doesn't appear that there's anything in there. I just, maybe I'm looking at that incorrectly. It says no messages. I, I'm happy to answer any other questions and take any other advice or comments.
Okay. Any final words from Mary Kay? Okay, so on Monday, then we would be receiving the latest draft of this and we'll, we'll take it from there. Most likely, we have some meetings on Monday, Wednesday, or I'm sorry, Tuesday, Wednesday or Thursday to discuss this finally. Hopefully with some sort of announcement or release later in the week. So, okay, great. Okay.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right. Anything else to come? Thank you. Thank you very much, Mary Kay. Is there anything else to come before the Board of Commissioners, before we look to adjourn today? Okay, hearing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn at 11:04.
Second.
All those in favor of adjourning, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.